First half of our annual town meeting will now begin. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws in the town of Granby?
Yes, it has.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman Mr. Bale will lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are new tonight at town meeting, sitting in front we have our Finance Committee, our Select Board, our Town Administrator, our Town Attorney, and our Town Clerk. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the area designated for non-voters. And if you'd like to comment or discuss an article as moved, please raise your hand so I can see you, and I will call you. Wait for the mic to come to you and state your name and your address. All discussions and questions and comments need to be directed towards me, and I will direct them to the appropriate member of town meeting. I will now recognize Ms. McDowell to present the motion under Article One.
I move the town vote to conduct the business of the meeting as follows: On May 9, 2016, consider Articles Two through Sixteen, and on June 13, 2016, consider Articles Seventeen through Twenty-Six.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor of the motion under Article One, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article One passes unanimously. I will now recognize Ms. McDowell to present the motion under Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to hear the reports of town officers and all standing and special committees and act thereon.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This motion requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Two passes unanimously. Ms. McDowell will now present the motion under Article Three.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to conduct the listed activities as printed in the warrant for fiscal year 2017.
Second?
Second.
This requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Three passes unanimously. Ms. McDowell will now present the motion under Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the various departments to receive compensation for services rendered as printed in the warrant for the fiscal year 2017.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion under the motion? The motion under Article Four requires a majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Four passes unanimously. Ms. McDowell will now present the motion under Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to charge a fee of $65 for each site inspection deemed necessary by a quorum of the commission. Fees shall be payable to the Town of Granby Conservation Commission and deposited in the Conservation Hatch Fund.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion for the motion under Article Five? Article Five requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Five passes unanimously. Ms. McDowell will now present the motion under Article Six.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the following gifts in calendar year 2015 for perpetual care of cemetery lots. Robert A. Glesman III., $1,000.155. Richard J. Lucia, $1,000.155. Leo Fugler Jr., $1,000.155. Deanna Flaherty, $1,555. Samuel &amp; Lisa LaRiviere, $765. And William Julian, $1,555.
Second?
Second.
This motion requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion for Article Six passes unanimously. I would now like to ask for a motion to recess the annual town meeting and call to order the special town meeting. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? So we will now begin the special town meeting because a quorum is present. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
Yes, it has.
So I will now recognize Mary McDowell to present the motion under Article One for the special town meeting.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the General Purpose Stabilization Fund.
Discussion?
Do you want to talk first? Okay. Go ahead. You have to recognize him?
No, not yet.
This article right now is to take from free cash that sum of $100,000. Right now, we have a... Before that cash is deposited in there, we have a balance of $777,566.
Right here, please.
Madam Moderator, thank you. I rise to respectfully ask the town meeting to vote no on this particular article. In fact, I will rise for the following two articles as well. As Ms. McDowell mentioned, these are... This particular article is to transfer free cash to stabilization. The school department is in the process of finalizing its budget, and we may be in a position to come to the town to ask for additional funds. We would love to have the opportunity to have access to all possible funds available to us, which includes free cash. This does not take away the ability of the town meeting to do the same at a later time, but because the financial discussions will take place at the second leg of the town meeting in June, we would, again, respectfully request that we vote no on this one, which will, de facto, postpone that conversation and vote to June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Over here, please.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. Are we going to transfer the rest of the free cash to different accounts later on? Mary said there's over $700,000 in there, and you're talking about $300,000 here. So are there other articles transferring the rest of it out?
Rich, we have $292,549,000 in free cash. We are taking that money and dispersing it in the next two articles, as well as Article Number One, which would equal $292,549.
Didn't you mention something about a $700,000?
In the General Purpose Stabilization Fund...
Yeah.
...we have a balance right now. Prior to the addition of new funds, we have a balance of $777,566. Okay? Just wanted to give the balance so that people would know what the balance is. Generally, that's a question, so I thought I'd give...
Okay, and I had a question on the roughly $300,000 in free cash. Since we're not getting any more landfill receipts anymore, where did most of that come from? I assume some of it came from the snow removal account. Are there two or three major accounts that led to this $300,000? Where did it come from?
Could you give the microphone back to the microphone man? Thank you.
As you know, Rich, this free cash is determined by either bringing in more revenue than what you budgeted, or spending less expenses than what you budgeted. This is just a bunch of different things. There's no major source, one way or the other, that I can say $100,000 came from, say, motor vehicle excise. We budgeted, say, $500,000. We brought in $600,000. Things of that nature. But it's just various accounts that it came from. Now, our free cash for next year will also be a large amount, because as you alluded to, we budgeted a large amount for snow and ice for FY '16 that we didn't spend. So what we didn't spend there will convert into free cash for fiscal year '17. It's always one year behind, so basically, this is from the operations of 2015, not current year operations.
Would you like to talk?
Pam Distardens, 112 Burnett Street. What exactly are these three expenditures for? These are being transferred to pay for something, I assume.
Pam, these aren't expenditures. All we're doing is taking free cash and throw it into...
Moving it over to stabilization.
Into our savings account. Stabilization funds are basically our savings accounts.
I understand.
So that's all we're doing. We're just taking the available...
What's it preparing for?
It's just for future use, for whatever we would need it for, you know, whether it's a...
Is this the money that's intended to cover the teachers and all of the school stuff that's being discussed lately? Is that the ultimate intent of this?
No, this is just to appropriate free cash and put it into an account that will make it available after June 30. If we don't spend the free cash as of June 30...
Yeah.
...it becomes a lost revenue source until it's recertified again in either November or December of this year. So what you're doing is you appropriate it into a stabilization fund, so it's available from July 1 to when it would normally be recertified.
If that's the case, Chris, and pardon me if I'm being really stupid or dense about this, but if that's the case, why isn't the whole $700,000 being moved over?
No, $700,000 is a balance in the stabilization fund...
Right.
...right now. Once we appropriate the $100,000, we'll have $877,000.
I got that part, so why isn't the extra $400,000 going over?
No, no. The balance in free cash is...
Right.
We're taking... Of that $292,000, we're taking $100,000 thrown into the General Purpose Stabilization Fund. We're taking $100,000 thrown into the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund, and then the 92 is going to capital needs, which will completely appropriate out our free cash that's available to us.
So there's no free cash after these three transfers?
Correct.
Any further comments? Over here, please, in the bleachers.
Hi, my name is Diana Pelter, 8 Karen Drive, Granby. My question in regards to this Article, Article One, Two, and Three, which is kind of piggybacking on what he said, I understand that it totals $292,549 that the town would like to allocate and put it into this fund, but you're indicating that it cannot be used for the schools. Is that correct?
We're saying it's going into...
A stabilization fund.
...into a stabilization fund.
Right.
It has to be moved out of stabilization at a later time.
But what is it being utilized for? What are my tax-paying dollars going to? That's $300,000. We have schools in disarray, and somehow, we can't all seem to agree on where this money needs to go. So I'd like to know, other than moving it into a fund, what is... After it's there, put in the stabilization fund, what is the purpose of it?
Then it can be used for any purpose that town meeting so desires to appropriate out for. Mr. Emery, as part of his discussion tonight, is saying, "Don't put the money into stabilization fund at this point in time." He'd rather wait until the June 13 meeting, when a full discussion of the school... A voted school budget is presented to town meeting, and then town meeting can make their decision on how they want to spend this money, whether for the school, or whether to put it into stabilization fund at that time. That's all Mr. Emery is asking for as part of his discussion tonight.
Correct. So I would just like to further elaborate, so that I think all the taxpayers are clear. What you're saying is if we move this into the stabilization fund now, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I've misunderstood, but it will not be available for the schools when we need to readdress you once there's a finalized school committee budget?
No, it will be available. It would just be... It would have to come out of stabilization fund instead of free cash.
And it will not be spent in the meantime?
It can't be. Not until we... Town meeting has to give us permission to spend those funds.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Further discussion up here in the bleachers?
So I'm not the... This is Joe Rakowski. I'm not the smartest guy, but can somebody just clean this up for us a little bit? It's confusing as to what it is we're trying to do. And I don't think I'm the only one. I'm looking around the room, and people are... You know, they've got hairy eyeballs. So please, somebody walk us through as if we don't know anything.
I'll take a shot.
Thank you.
Okay. Stabilization fund is just a savings account. So when we put money into stabilization fund, you're just... It's like you're putting it in your... Instead of putting it in your checkbook, you're putting it in your savings book. If I understand Mr. Evan correctly, they want to keep it in free cash. It takes 50% of town meeting to appropriate free cash. So if you wanted to apply it to the school budget for something, you need a 50% of town meeting to vote for it. If it's in stabilization, it takes a 2/3 majority to put the money into stabilization or to take it out. So the hurdle's a little bit higher in June. Or... No, I'm sorry. If it's in stabilization, the hurdle is higher.
To get it out.
To get it out. And I think what Mr. Evan is saying is that they would... The school committee, is that... Just Mr. Evan. Would like to vote this down, so the money remains free cash, and then when the school budget actually comes up for a vote at the next portion of annual town meeting in June, then that free cash would have a 50% chance of being applied to the school budget. Does that make sense?
I'm John Libera from the Finance Committee. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. One, first is to repeat that free cash is what had happened in fiscal year 2015. We're in fiscal year 2016 now. This is a result of what happened in fiscal year 2015, the fiscal year that ended last June 30. We had, according to the state, we had excess income items, and we had expenditure items that were less than what we had expected in the budget. But some of those two things together turns out to be what they certify as free cash. The town is always trying to sort of get free cash and certify it, and one reason is because it's a source of emergency funds for you that you can vote with a 50% vote for purposes such as your budget for next year or things that come up. Usually, we have... In past years, we've had a meeting in the springtime where we have voted a lot of free cash for different things, because stuff has come up in the budgets, or stuff has come up, opportunities to buy some things, some equipment. And that hasn't happened this year, so we have the money left. We want to put it into free cash, because technically, if we don't put it into... If we take the money that's in free cash and we don't put it into stabilization funds, then technically, on June 30, it disappears from sight. Money's still there, but it disappears from sight. It is no longer available to the town. It's only available to the town if we have it locked up in our savings account, which is the free cash. So that's some of the technicalities. Now, let's get to the budget. First of all, one thing I hope everybody understands is that this is not a school-versus-town thing, you know? We don't think in those kinds of terms. And among other reasons why we don't think in those kinds of terms is that we talk about the town, but the town is not one particular entity. We have quite a few of elected officials that run their own departments, and every one of them is independent from another. Not everybody reports to the Select Board. There are a number of departments that report to the Select Board. There are a lot of departments that are completely independent. So imagine trying to put together a budget, which we have to do every year, when you've got all of these independent entities running around who have the opportunity to make a budget request of town meeting. The school is the biggest one, but there are some other fairly good-sized departments, some of whom report to the Select Board, some of whom are completely independent. So we set some guidelines that everybody usually agrees with, because they understand that we're a town and we're in this together. And one of the guidelines is that we ask people to adhere to certain constraints on the budget. The schools have a different sort of constraint, because they start off with a state-required minimum that has to be spent on the schools. We have voted an override fund for them from 10 years ago, and then they build from there for what it is that they want. But everybody else works under this constraint. We say we have this much money to spend. What happens if all of a sudden, the game changes for one of the entities and not for the rest? That's what's being... Supposedly, what's being asked for here. But in matter of fact, it won't do that. If we... In past years, there's always been free cash that's been put into stabilization fund, and then at the budget meeting for town, there is stabilization funds available. If somebody wants to amend any budget, they're welcome to. And if they want to amend it, they can ask for the amendment for the budget to be taken out of the stabilization fund. There's a procedure for that. Takes a 2/3 vote. The schools can do that. The police department can do that. The highway department can do that. Anybody who runs any department can do that at the town meeting. We said this year, that $290,000 roughly was not available for the departments, because we have to start replenishing the funds. We know, for example, we just took $2 million out to pay for the school building, to contribute for the school building. You can look for yourself in our past reports as to how much rolling stock we're going to need to replace, and roads to repair, and everything else like that. So there's lots and lots of requests for that stabilization fund money. But the thing is, is that if it's suddenly back in free cash, then it's not just the schools that have the right to come to town meeting in June and say, "We would like an additional $300,000 in order to do so-and-so-and-so." But the police department also has the right, then, to come and say, "Oh, the rules have changed. We don't have the restrictions on that money more." If they want some additional funds, they can come and ask for them at the town meeting. If David Rozier wants some additional funds for the highway department, there's $300,000 that's suddenly there, it looks like. And what we had carefully kind of crafted together as this overall budget procedure for the town, and the overall constraints on the budget, are all out the window. So that's one of the other reasons why we would ask you to please put the money into stabilization fund, like we always do, and run the town meeting like we always do. Anybody has access to change the budget at the town meeting coming up in June 3, but we ask that you say, "The way to do it is to take it out of stabilization fund money then," or ask for an override, which is what the schools had claimed last year that they were going to do. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I didn't introduce myself last time. Emery Evan, 18 Crescent Street. I just want to clarify my request. I don't believe that the request is doing anything but postponing this conversation to June, when the financial conversations take place. And also, I'm not sure that I understand how it changes the rules for just one entity. In fact, when the conversations take place in June, the same amount, through the same mechanism, same rules, will be available to anyone, just like they are through stabilization fund or other means that are available to us. So just to be clear, I wasn't trying to get into the budget conversations, since they're going to take place in June, but all I'm asking is if the town meeting agrees, obviously, to postpone that conversation until June, so we have all different ways of funding the school budget may be available to us. At this point, we don't even know what that amount might be. Just having the opportunity to be able to have that conversation was basically the driver of that request. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over here, please, Pam.
Just a point of clarification, in case I fell asleep while John was talking. John, are we saying that it's a 50% vote tonight out of free cash, but a 2/3 if the same money is sitting in stabilization?
No, tonight, it's 2/3.
Tonight, it's 2/3?
And it will be 2/3 also if it goes into stabilization in June.
Well, that's not what I heard.
Yes, it is.
Pam, Pam, let me just try and understand your question. You're asking, if we leave this money in free cash...
Yep.
...what percent vote does it take to appropriate it?
To the school committee.
That would be a 50% vote.
Okay.
Money put either into or taken out of a stabilization fund requires a 2/3 vote.
2/3. Okay. That was the clarification I was looking for. So it's a harder vote to move this money, which may or may not go to be intended for the schools, but certainly appears, in my personal opinion, to be structured that way? It's a harder vote once it's in the stabilization fund?
Correct.
Mr. Randall.
George Randall, Taylor Street. I'm not sure my comment's going to be appropriate for this, but when you guys start transferring some money here, I hope you give consideration to replacing this lousy sound system that's in this room. It's terrible.
That's the first I heard of that. Up here in the bleachers, Joe.
Chris, I just want to make sure. I thought you said, "Is it 2/3 to go in, and also 2/3 to go out of stabilization?"
Yes.
So if we're going to vote on these three articles tonight, it's 2/3 to go into stabilization?
Yes.
Right?
But that's not what I just started to say. He just said 50% to go into stabilization, and 2/3 to come out of stabilization.
No, no, no. No, he didn't say that.
And I repeat it.
No, no. Pam, what I said is if the money from free cash does not get put into stabilization, it stays as free cash. It only requires a 50% vote to appropriate it. If it goes into stabilization or comes out of stabilization, it requires a 2/3 vote. So this article, as presented to you now, requires a 2/3 vote to put the $100,000 into stabilization. Then...
Wait for the microphone if you want to talk, please, because people can't hear.
Oh, but they can hear me.
If it stays in stabilization... I mean, if it stays in free cash, then it can be moved from free cash to the department with a 50% vote.
Correct.
To move it from free cash into stabilization tonight, it would take a 2/3 vote...
Correct.
...and then to move it out of stabilization to the department would require a 2/3 vote.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Over here, please. No, uh-uh, I see you over here.
Where are we going?
Gary Phelps, Bachelor Street. I've heard several repetitions now, "I'd like to move the motion, please."
All right. In order for me to move the motion, I need a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor of voting on the motion, please, to move the question, please raise your cards. To move the question, which means we're halting discussion, we're stopping discussion, and we're going to vote on it next. If you're in favor of that, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? All right, so now we will vote on the motion under Article One. All those in favor of the motion under Article One, and this requires a two-thirds vote to pass, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Can I have the counters come up, please? You can put your cards down, we're going to count them. All those in favor of the motion under Article One, please raise your cards and keep them Keep them up, please. All those opposed to the motion under Article One, please raise your cards and keep them The motion under Article One passes by a two-thirds majority. I will now call on Mary McDowell to present the motion under Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the Municipal Building Construction Renovation Stabilization Fund.
Thank you. Second? Over here, please.
I would ask, this money that we're moving to another stabilization fund, what would be the intent of the money? Which buildings do you guys possibly have in mind for the Construction Renovation Stabilization Fund?
And your name is Diane Peltier?
Diana Peltieri, Karen Drive, sorry.
Mark Dale, Select Board. Diana, it's, that's really kind of an accounting, it's not even accounting, kind of bookkeeping. We put the money in those funds just so it's kind of earmarked, but quite honestly, town meeting could take it out of any fund, suspend it on any, like, legal thing. So, I mean, if you wanted to buy a police car from the Building Stabilization Fund, you could do that with a two-thirds vote. So it's really there just to give us an idea. It's kind of a rough budget rather than an actual proposal, and it's not locked up in any particular way.
Further questions or comments?
Could I just ask one question? What is the difference in the interest rate between leaving it in cash, I'm assuming we're in some type of high-interest cash fund, or moving it into one of these stabilization
That's actually none of our responsibilities. It's the responsibility of the treasurer, who is in charge of the money. And so, and treasurer's not here tonight, so that information is not available.
You need to wait for the microphone.
Is that something maybe we could get in the future?
Hopefully, yeah, we'll see if we can get the treasurer here and let him explain it.
Also, I was wondering if maybe someone could comment on when the last time each one of our departments has filed amendments to the town on their budgets? I think maybe some of the taxpayers might want to know that.
Diane, your question is outside the scope of the motion. Is there any further questions or comments? Right here, please.
Joe Furnia, 154 Taylor Street. I'd just like to remind everybody that under the Fed's banking policy of suppressing interest rates, that if you keep your money in a CD for five years, you get roughly 2%. And if you currently put it in a short-term savings account, you get roughly 1/4 of 1% to 1/2 of 1%, depending on the bank. So basically, you're making no money, and as a matter of fact, the big banks are talking about charging companies to keep money in their savings accounts.
Any other comments? In order for the motion to pass under Article Two, it requires a two-thirds vote. So can I have the counters? So all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed to the motion under Article Two, please raise your cards. The motion passes by a two-thirds majority, 66 yes, 22 no. The moderator will now call on Mary McDowell to present the motion under Article Three.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $92,549 for the purpose of funding the Capital Needs Stabilization Fund.
Any discussion? Up here, please. Can you raise your hand so he can see you?
Abelson Coldhill. John, with the first article, you said the technicality was if we didn't transfer the money to a stabilization fund, it disappeared as a technicality. Would you just explain that for us, what that technicality is and why it doesn't disappear?
Yes, what happens is that we have a number of funds available right now to spend on the budget for next year or to make sure that we have a hold of, to spend at our will next year. If we don't spend any of those monies, then they go into this accounting system of the state, and we'll have money from this fiscal year, because it's available right now. We'll have money from this fiscal year, which wasn't used, wasn't allocated to any of the things, which you can allocate money, including stabilization funds. So it goes back into the pot. The money is there. It's at the state level. But if, for example, on July 2nd, we needed a sum of money, which was the sum of everything in the stabilization, it's a silly event, but if you needed a sum of money, that's everything that's in the stabilization funds, what wouldn't be there would be this $300,000. Would not be available to you unless you went and had a special request of the state to recertify the cash earlier than they usually do it. Usually, our recertification takes place in February or so, and you could, you could go through the process of asking to recertify, but on just in normal course of events, it goes back into the accounting books. So it's there, but you can't use it.
Further questions or comments? Doc Abelson, again? Can you wait for the microphone, please?
Thank you. Abelson Coldhill. Until it's recertified, and how does it get recertified?
Granby could ask for a special recertification, and the state would take the accounting and then recertify the money. But in the normal course of events, it happens, and usually it's February or so, then when the money gets recertified. And in essence, we've never really needed the money, so it's okay if it goes back into free cash. But on the other hand, you sort of like to know what you have available.
But we still have it available, it's just a hassle, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a real hassle. You couldn't do it-
So how long, how long does it take to get it back?
How long would it take to make a special request?
Mr. Abelson, okay. I think what you're trying to ask is, why does free cash disappear?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Okay. What happens is, every July, June 30th, we develop a balance sheet for the town of Granby. What happens is, as part of that, we have to tell the Department of Revenue what we budgeted for revenues, what we actually brought in for revenues, what we budgeted for expenses, and what we actually spent for expenses. They take those numbers, they look at our balance sheet, and we have a number on there called a undesignated fund balance. They take that number, and they turn around and say, "Okay, do we have any deficit accounts in any of our special revenues?" They take it away from that. They then look at our receivable balances, they take that away. What is left in that undesignated fund balance becomes free cash. It's a simplified explanation for you of what happened. So what we have to do is, every June 30th, submit our balance sheet for the town of Granby. It gets submitted to the Department of Revenue, they look at the various parts, and then they determine what part of that undesignated fund balance is available, free cash. That's how they develop the free cash number. And it's based upon your operations for the prior fiscal year.
Madam Moderator, I, I still am getting mixed message here. I, I, I think I'm fairly clever, but I'm sorry, I don't understand fully the explanation. Does everyone else understand?
Okay. The free cash is only available to June 30th of every year.
Yes, okay.
Okay?
Yes.
As of July 1, it no longer becomes a, an available funding source, because the Department of Revenue has to recalculate the number on an annual basis. Okay? What it takes is, like I said, we submit the balance sheet for our prior fiscal year to them, and then they redetermine what that number is. That usually occurs late November, mid-December of every year. So once they make that recalculation or certification of this number, it now becomes an available funding source at that point in time. He doesn't understand.
You have to determine a different number than what we use.
He must know it's not here, you get it back. You basically get it back.
It doesn't disappear, well, it becomes an unavailable source.
Until you ask for it back.
Until it's recertified.
That's what you need to say to him. That's what you need to say, as clear as that.
Okay, the moderator is saying that basically, we don't lose the free cash, it just becomes unavailable as of July 1. It becomes available once Department of Revenue tells us what the number is as in December or November.
So the state can't say, "Granby, you thought you had 300, but we're only giving you back 66,000." Or can they say that?
It all depends how the balance sheet, what the balance sheet numbers are when we go for recertification. It's based upon the operations of the town for the prior fiscal year. It changes every year. In the past, when we had landfill receipts, it was 1.4 million we would get for a certification because we didn't budget those numbers. Now, because we have that, we're down around 300,000, which is based upon our true operations of us being fiscally conservative in our revenues and trying not to spend what we budget out for expenses.
Thank you.
Yep. Right behind him, please.
Okay, I'm going to drag this out. If the cash doesn't get allocated by June 30th, when will it become available after that date? Does it get rolled over into next year's free cash? When is the date- When is the date, at what date, does that cash become available again to be used? That's, I think, what he was asking.
John Laber again. Let me take one more crack, maybe with an example. The town of Granby, like all towns, collects the revenue for the automobile tax, the twenty-five bucks a thousand. And what we have is in the neighborhood of seven-hundred thousand dollars a year. So we go into this budget time right here, looking at all of our sources of income, and we say that, well, we think we're going to have seven-hundred thousand dollars of funds from those sources. And so we build that on into the budget. Now, the state has an interest in making sure towns don't spend more money than they take in, and that they know exactly how much they have. So we come to the end of next fiscal year, and the state's going to say, well, did you in fact have seven-hundred thousand dollars that came in from that source? Everything else being equal, if you had eight-hundred thousand dollars, then they would say to you, okay, you have an extra hundred thousand dollars over and above what you thought you were going to have, so that is available to you for you to spend as you wish, as long as it's allocated. Now, here's the question, that's right where we are right now. We have that hundred thousand dollars. If we don't spend it or commit it by the end of this fiscal year for next year, then from the point of view of the state, once again, they now have to go and do some kind of study as to what we thought we had for sources of income and whether it matched up, what we had for sources of outgo and whether it matched up. And they're going to say, and until we do that, you don't know whether you have any free cash next year or not. So it becomes part of the recertification process. If, in fact, we had, in one sense, spent it by allocating it to one of the reserve funds, then it goes out of that process. It's right there, right here in our hands, and it stays in the town. It's the stuff that they're not sure about and we're not sure about that all goes back into an accounting bundle on June 30th. So...
Further discussion? Over here on the bleachers.
James Guzman, 69 Taylor Street. So basically, you're saying, we have the cash, but the state's going to hold it until they recount everything and tell us what we have to spend. Is that basically what you're saying?
Yes. Yes. On the bleachers.
Sorry, Joe, for anyone, 54. Okay, so then what is negative free cash?
Years ago, Granby was in that situation, and Joe remembers it, that's why I asked the question. That's the same accounting system, except in that case, you actually spent more money or took in less income, and the combination netted out to a negative amount than you took in for, that you had budgeted for the year. So then the next year, the state says, all right, now you have minus two-hundred thousand dollars in free cash. Well, I think it's a figure that actually, because we've bought minus two-hundred thousand dollars of free cash. Well, what that means is that you have to take that into account, and you basically have to find the funds to replace that before you can proceed with the rest of the money that you're going to say that you're going to take in and allocate once again. But it's another example, I think, of why the state calls a timeout on June 30th every year and says, okay, all bets are off. Unless these things are exactly in these kind of places, we're going to have to recertify it and take a look closely again. They don't trust us. We don't trust them. So it's a process which happens like that every year.
Any other comments? The bleachers.
Diane here, 8 Karen Drive. So can someone clarify for me? At the beginning of the opening of this statement, there was talk of seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars worth of revenue. These amendments that you put forth here were two-ninety-two, five-forty-nine, right? So that two-ninety-two, five-forty-nine, which we've been talking about through these articles, I guess I have a question as to the four-eighty-five, is that already accounted for, spent? Because if so, is that too going to go back to the state and be kind of up in arms where we'd have to ask for it again in February? Or did I confuse something? I apologize.
Personally, on this question, I think we're getting really heavy into the weeds of accounting for government things. The seven-hundred-and-seventy-whatever figure was, every year, this is where it comes from, every year when we stand up here and talk about putting money into the stabilization fund, somebody says, how much is in the stabilization fund? So Mary was being very good and proactive, and she said what, how much was in the stabilization fund. For whatever reason, it didn't come out clearly enough, so people were thinking that we were appropriating seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand, that's the balance in that particular stabilization fund.
That's the balance before we move these two-ninety-two.
Before we...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Anything, yeah.
Okay. And I know I'm kind of into the weeds and the details, but, you know, no disrespect, Mark, I think this is kind of where a lot of questions in town are coming up, is that, you know, the taxpayers don't feel we get enough answers sometimes. So I appreciate the transparency with the seven-eighty-five, Mary. So that's where I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out the other four-eighty-five. If I've heard you tonight, if we don't put it somewhere, if I've listened intently and tried to pay as much attention to all the details, then basically, we have to give it back to the state if we don't have someplace for it? No, we still keep it.
The money basically is still our money. Again, it's like, it's an accounting thing, that's what I meant by the weeds, and I didn't mean to disparage what you're saying. Basically, you have a budget, and by the end of the year, you've either underspent or overspent the budget.
So if we keep...
And that money is the free cash, what's left over, basically.
The four-eighty-five.
Right. Well, whatever's in free cash. Free cash is like your budget and whatever's left over. If it's negative, then it's not left over, you're in the negative. So that's the free cash. We typically have put our free cash into stabilization funds, which are our savings accounts. Takes a two-thirds majority of town meeting to put money into it or take money out of it.
Correct.
Okay. So if that money is in the stabilization, and somebody wants to amend the school budget in June, when the school budget comes up, two-thirds majority of town meeting can take money from the stabilization to cover up a potential gap in June. So we're doing, we're offering what's typical. What Emery had basically said was, he wanted to do something different with it, basically a different process. If you don't spend that money or appropriate it by putting it into the stabilization fund or spending it on something after going through town meeting and stuff, if you don't do that, it becomes unfree. Because free cash basically means you can spend it, you're free to, it's been checked out by the state, it's free to be spent. But if you don't do anything with it by the end of the fiscal year, then it goes back, it becomes, it's not...
Becomes the state's again, right?
No, no. It's our money, but you're not free to spend it until the state checks it out, makes sure everything is okay with your bookkeeping and your books. And this is like a regular process. So much of what happens in town, from a regular person's perspective, it just seems like, oh, the town's doing it, but the state's, basically, they approve our tax rate, they check, and they tell us how much, like, we can raise in taxes and all this kind of stuff. And the free cash is just kind of part of their accounting system.
Okay, so I'm really, you know, trying to understand. So there's seven-hundred and seven, there was seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, correct, today at the opening?
We're going to try to clarify something for you.
Okay.
And can you give the microphone back to the microphone person? Thank you.
Well, first of all, they've got the wrong person up here to try to clarify. I'm the one that started the whole thing in the process by giving the amount in there. But I just want to say, we have done this as a budgetary, as a way to deal with town finances every year. We take money every year from free cash. Hopefully, everyone understands the free cash issue, and we put it into various funds, stabilization funds. We're doing that like we do it every year. I'm asking you, if the school wants money out of any one of those stabilization funds, they can do that in June by a two-thirds vote. Any one of those. They can go into that fund that has seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, or the one that has nine-hundred-and-nineteen, after the hundred thousand is added, and you can go and take that money out with a two-thirds. I think we're complicating this to an extent, and what happens at these meetings sometimes, people get so darn confused that it distorts the whole picture. So I would ask that we, and I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a select board member, but that we go ahead and put the money in, and then if we want the money for the schools or for whatever else, we take it out in June with a two-thirds majority.
Hi, John Laber again. I'm not going to talk about the issue. I'm just going to say, I'm kind of with Mark, we ought to get on with voting on it. But I will say this, the numbers thing are complicated to people who don't do numbers. They're even complicated to people who do do numbers sometimes. But I will volunteer to stay after the meeting and talk to anybody for as long as you want and go through all of these sorts of questions in detail. I'm happy to do it. If you want to know the answers to those sort of questions, just stay after the meeting, and we can, I'll take you through it with a pencil and paper, and we can try to get to where we can come to some understanding of some of these issues. Thank you.
All right, so in order to move on, this motion requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So all those in favor of the motion under Article Three, please raise your cards. And can I have the counters to count the cards? You can put them down, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. The motion under Article Three passes by a majority, seventy-seven yeses, seventeen no. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to approve a power purchase agreement between the town of Granby and Kirsarg Athol LLC for a term of twenty years.
Second? All right. Discussion?
What the town is coming forward is to approve a power purchase agreement with Kirsarg Energy. It is a solar field that we will be purchasing the power from. The agreement is a twenty-year agreement with a possible extension of two additional five years if we both agree to it. What it is, is on our energy bill, we would receive a credit for the national grid rate for the provision of power. We would then pay Kirsarg Energy eighty percent of that rate for savings of twenty percent in the generation of power. Based upon the town's current usage, if we purchased four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand kilowatts per year, we would have a potential savings of eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars per year.
Further discussion or questions? On the bleachers here, Joe.
Joe Fernian, 154 Taylor. So what you're saying is, we use four-hundred, we purchase currently four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand kilowatts annually from National Grid, and Athol or Granby One, I'm assuming they separately incorporate an energy unit for the town, we're going to save, we're not going to be paying for eleven-thousand kilowatt hours, in essence. That's what the trade-off is. Oh, it's a twenty percent savings, so... Okay. Okay, but the rate is, National Grid charges us a distribution or network fee, and then there's an energy fee, and we're saving on the energy portion of our usage only, correct?
We are saving, currently, the National Grid rate for power generation is twelve-point-seven cents per kilowatt hour. What will happen is, by entering into this agreement, we'll get a credit for the twelve-point-seven cents per kilowatt hour, but we will then pay Kirsarg ten-point-two percent, or ten-point-two cents per kilowatt hour for savings of two-and-a-half cents per kilowatt hour.
Because we're buying the energy through Kirsarg or whatever.
Instead of National Grid.
Instead of National Grid, so like, so like when I go out and contract with an independent energy source in the marketplace, that's what we're getting, is that savings? Now, is this being done through the council of governments, or is this an independent?
Nope, this is a independent...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Diane? No? No, go ahead.
Karen Eaton, Green Meadow Lane. Do we still pay a delivery charge to National Grid? Are they, they're going to charge us more for the delivery? No? Okay, thank you.
Did everybody hear the answers to those questions? Yes, we will still be.
Just so people understand, when you get your electric bill, there's two parts to it. One is for the delivery or distribution, which is the wires that you're paying for, and the maintenance of the wires, and the other is for the generation of the power. You will still, we will still have to pay for the distribution charge to get the power to our buildings. We will no longer be paying for the generation of power. That's where this two-and-a-half cent savings is, it's just on the generation of power, not on the distribution.
Okay. Diana?
Diana Pelteri, Karen Drive. My question is, is it only for town buildings, or the schools are being considered in this proposal, as well as the police station, the fire station, across the board? And just for transparency as well, I too work in the solar industry, so I am aware of the supply and the demand and how it breaks down. So I'm interested as to whether or not we shop this around to competitors, and if we put any bids out into possibly, you know, doing as other towns have done with empty parcels of land and turning them into solar fields for their town residents.
Okay, first question. The school entered into its own separate power purchasing agreement that I understand that they already signed with Kirsarg. That's to cover the school buildings only. This agreement is to cover all the other municipal buildings, police, fire, annex, senior center, streetlights, things of that nature. Okay? That's what we're doing here. No, I have not gone out for a bid on... No, I have not gone out for a bid on this, to be, to tell you the truth, because with Kirsarge coming into town, I was trying to give them the business. Because we will be getting tax revenue from them for the construction of their field in the Town of Granby. So, basically, I was trying to do a cooperative type of agreement back and forth to promote the development of additional fields in town, hopefully that we could attract more people to come in to generate more tax revenue so that we can have it available for budgets.
Further questions? Right in the front, please.
Rebecca Alexander, 197 West State Street. Who pays for the construction of the field? Okay.
In the back?
Francis Quinlan, Taylor Street. Where's this field going to be and when will it be built?
We have Andrew Bernstein here from Kirsarge, and if we'd like him to speak to these questions, I would just need town meeting permission. So, all those in favor of letting Mr. Bernstein speak about the company, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? So then, Mr. Bernstein, can you come up here, please?
Agree? No problem. On South Athol Road, they were approved by the planning board. There's no Conservation Commission issues with these projects. On South Athol Road? It's, it's, so there's two different things going on. We're building projects in the Town of Granby. The power that's being approved today, if I can just add one thing, basically, the town is buying the net metered credits. National Grid gives a rate. The current rate on net metering is changed to 16.2 cents. The nice thing about this is the town gets 20% of that rate no matter what it is. There's no additional cost to the town. So, it's actually higher than what Chris had indicated. It's now at about 3 cents. Over the winter, it was at 21 cents, so it would have been 20% of 21 or 4 cents. So, the town has no additional costs to any of this. They're entering in, it's basically, of the 351 towns throughout the state of Massachusetts, hundreds have entered into similar agreements because it just generates revenue for the town. We're also building projects in town, which Chris was indicating, where we're paying taxes, personal property taxes to the town for those projects. So, for this project, because we'd already sold, the school committee is buying some of the output from the projects in town. We filled up the output from that. This is an additional project that we wanted to offer to the town to get the benefits of that because this program is basically, as some of the people probably know, is basically ended. It's filled up in all the caps and incentives.
Thank you.
Sure.
Over here, please, Pam?
Just to clarify, for those of you who are here, this is a project on East Street on the Westover properties, correct?
Correct.
That the planning board approved. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking about something else. The planning board approved these property, these projects, rather, a number of months ago after multiple meetings with Kirsarge. So, they're putting up solar panels on East Street on the property that Westover took over a lot of that housing, and the effort was to create some taxable revenues off those properties and also from the town's perspective to negotiate a lower electrical rate, which is commendable. So, just so you understand what the beginnings of this is, this isn't like some project out in East Kokomo that we're buying electricity or like the projects that are going on around town. This is an actual project in town that the planning board had approved on, I believe ultimately, five different sites. My memory's not what it used to be. And the, the project was going up. It fed all of criteria that the town required. We went through all of the site plan approvals, and that was a done deal. So, now, this is a negotiation to give the town some credit for their electrical, for their electricity usage, to benefit the town on a secondary basis on top of the fact that there'll be some tax revenues on those properties that Westover took over. I don't know if that helps, but it's, it's not just sort of a place we're buying electricity from. It's actually a project here in town.
Thank you. Joe Wachowski in the back, please.
So, I was just going to make an observation as a point of order. Part of the challenge is, we're asked to vote on something that most people in the room don't understand, and then they're forced to ask questions, and they're legitimate questions, but the sequence doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It would be more helpful to hear this from Pam and to hear from our town leaders and then indicate that there's going to be a vote. And it, so regardless of what issue we're talking about, it's a sequencing issue. We're forced to ask questions on legitimate, you know, issues, but because we don't have all the context, it's, it's hard to wrap our heads around it. So, that's just an observation. If there's any way we could change that in the future, it would be incredibly helpful and it would make this meeting very efficient and it would require less questions from the audience. That's my feeling.
Well, I imagine there were public hearings on this that the public could have gone to to ask questions there, but since they didn't hear would be the appropriate venue to be asking questions and discussing the motion. Over here, please.
So, this might be a little out of the scope, but since you're here, have we talked with Kirsarge about putting solar panels on the town buildings to help bring in some more revenue that way?
That actually is outside the scope of the question of the motion.
Okay, well, I would ask our select board and planning board and whoever to consider that question going forward to help close school gap, stuff like that.
Mr. Martin indicated that he wanted to bring Kirsarge here, so a good deal was put together. And to maintain transparency, were they also given a tax break on their real estate, Mr. Martin?
They were not given a tax break. What they're current, what we, the town is currently doing is looking at a payment in lieu of tax agreement with Kirsarge for a 20-year period of time. That agreement is currently in the Board of Assessors' office, being reviewed by them to make sure it meets their criteria. Before we can enter into that agreement, we have to bring that agreement back to town meeting for approval. And if we can, we're trying to hopefully get it back in front of town meeting, probably for the June 13th meeting, if we can get everything together in a timely basis.
Over here again on the bleachers.
So, to further clarify that, because I was a little confused on what I just heard, the revenue in lieu of paying taxes, so that 20% that we're going to be getting back is in lieu, they're not going to be paying property tax, we're getting the 20% instead?
Can you just say your name again, please?
James Guzman.
I get sick of sitting there after a while. Oh, James, it's kind of like two separate things. We're, tonight, we're voting on basically a power deal, buying power from Kirsarge at a basically 20% discount for 20 years. The other thing we will vote on is what's going to be a pilot agreement, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, and we'll do that. And that will be, basically, that's the taxing thing, which I'll explain more in, in June. So, tonight, all we're voting on basically is the discount on the buying electricity.
From, from what it sounds like, we're voting on whether or not we are purchasing from these people, and if we do vote to purchase from these people, does that lock us into an agreement to where we need to vote on giving them the tax break?
No.
So, come June 13th, when we vote on whether or not we're going to take payment in lieu of taxes, if we say no, we're not doing that, we still get the 20% discount?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
In order for Article IV to pass, it must pass by a majority. So, all those in favor of the motion under Article IV, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and to call to, back to order the annual town meeting. Second. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? So, the annual town meeting will now resume at 8:25 with Article VII. I will ask Mr. Berry to present it.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the following revolving funds in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and 1/2, as printed in the warrant, and to authorize expenditures for those funds for the fiscal year 2017 without further appropriation. Inspections revolving, $92,709. Parks oversight, $40,000. Charter day, $50,000. Planning board, $50,000. After-school activities program, $20,000. Dog fund, $12,116. And the library, $2,000.
Second. Any discussion or comments or questions? Right here, please.
Are all the funds, the revenues for all of these revolving funds, are they coming from the funds themselves by receipts they collect?
From user fees?
Okay. And another question I had on the parks oversight revolving fund, I thought that was all the volunteer members and we're voting to pay wages. Who gets wages in the parks oversight fund?
The individual that takes care of the park opens and closes it. Someone has to open the building, close the building, clean the restrooms, et cetera.
Any other comments or questions? In order, oh, right, in the back, please.
Who's getting the $40,000?
Who's getting what?
Who's getting, was your question, who's getting the $40,000?
Yeah.
For the parks oversight?
Excuse me?
Out of parks oversight? Is that what you're asking?
Right. If wages are being paid, is somebody being paid $40,000 to open the gate?
No. That also includes all the park maintenance, upkeep, repair, et cetera. The person makes nowhere near $40,000. Chris, do you know how much? Maybe $6,000 a year goes to wages for opening and closing, depending on how many events there are.
In order for the motion under Article VII to pass, it must pass by a majority vote. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article VII passes by a majority vote. Mr. Berry will now present the motion under Article VIII.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize town departments to enter into agreements in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A for fiscal year 2017.
Thank you. Second. Is there any discussion on the motion on Article VIII? In order for the motion to pass for Article VIII, it must pass by a majority. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article IX.
I'm Albert Bale, Boarding North Street, and I'm chairman of the Personnel Board. Article IX, I move the town vote to amend the bylaw of the Town of Granby, Volume II, Chapter 19, Personnel Bylaw Appendix D, Classification Plan, Grade Assignments, by inserting Assistant Assessor, Grade V.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? In order for the motion to pass under Article IX, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article X.
I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume IX, Chapter 7, 19, Personnel Bylaw Appendix D, Compensation Plan, Pay Schedules, and Substituting a New Appendix D, Showing the 12 Pay Grades and the 10 Steps to Be Effective, July 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Second. Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to talk on that one.
Mr. Bale will talk first, and then I'll get to you.
Our task on the Personnel Board is to help the non-unionized employees from falling behind unionized groups in town, and among other things, salary. In addition, we are trying to keep our employees reasonably competitive with other surrounding community, similarly communities. We currently have 17 employees covered by this increase, of which eight or 47% are at the top step. The difference between last year's and this year's, this year is a total of $19,836 for these 17 employees. Those below would, would receive their step increases also. This year, we asked our, for a 2% salary increase for our employees, and that results in this $19,000 amount. Our consultant provided us with a list of 53 communities with a percent raise they are requesting for 2017. Thirty-three or, of those 53 communities are requesting at least a 2% raise. Are we now competitive with area towns? Here are a few examples from the results our consultant provided us with for the towns they had similar positions. Our council and aging director is seventh out of nine towns. Our town administrator secretary is fifth out of six towns. Our library director is seventh out of eight towns. Firefighter is fifth out of six towns. The mechanic is sixth out of seven towns. The heavy equipment operator is fifth out of five towns. The light equipment operator is fourth out of four towns. Surely, our request for $19,000 for a 2% raise is not unreasonable.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Oh, over here.
Joe Fernian, 154 Taylor Street. On page 70 of the, is, is this Appendix D, is this the step schedule that applies to these 17 people? Because I know you have the listing as Appendix C, so...
They're on...
That's on page 70 of the...
They're on this sheet.
Oh.
That was passed out.
Okay.
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 Okay. So then, okay, so I guess Appendix D is something, that would have been the previous year, and now it shows the increase of 2%, correct? Okay.
In order for the motion to pass under Article 10, it must pass by a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article 11.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to accept General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and a renewal of the cable franchise agreement to fund to begin operation for fiscal year 2017, which begins on July 1, 2016.
Thank you. Second, any discussion or comments? Up in the front, please.
John Pelham, Muncing Ridge. This is all good, I guess, except I see the phrase "renewal of the cable franchise agreement." What does this article have to do with renewing our cable franchise agreement?
As part of the agreement, we get revenue from cable. And that revenue can be used to support the community access channel, and it also can be used to pay the town's cost for renegotiating a cable contract. So that, in other words, this fund funds our negotiations with cable when the contract comes up for renewal. Is that correct, Chris?
Thank you.
The, what happened in the past, we were allowed to keep the receipts received for appropriation. In other words, they would, we would get the money from cable, and then it would be appropriated and spent on cable. That is no longer allowed by the state, so instead, we have to adopt this chapter and section in order for us to get the money from cable and then to be able to expend it again.
Joe, over here.
Joe Fernie, 154 Taylor. So does that mean that Article 16, the cable subscriber fees, the $949 we get annually, that's going to go away after this year, and that will fall in under this article that we're talking about?
I'm told that is correct, yes.
In order for the motion under Article 11 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article, the motion under Article 11 passes unanimously. Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to accept General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended, to establish an Other Post-Employment Benefit, also known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund.
Thank you. Second, any comments or discussion?
Other post-employment benefits are life insurance, health insurance for employees. What's happening right now, it's, we have a pay-go system. So right now, people paying into the system are paying for those who have retired and are getting these benefits. The state is concerned that this is not a sustainable model, and as a consequence, they want us to start putting aside money for these benefits. It would be nice if they gave us a little money for the rest of the stuff in our budget, but that's what this is about.
In order for the motion under Article 12 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article 13.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $150,000 for the purpose of funding the town's other post-employment benefits, OPEB liability. We just set up the account, this would, sorry.
Second, discussion?
We just set up the account, this would deposit $150,000 into that account.
Joe Fernie, 154 Taylor. So what is our total current exposure or liability? Because I know, and does this include the underfunding of the school retirement fund and those kinds of things?
We've just, we've just entered into a contract to do all the actuarial stuff to figure
He's coming.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. When is the last time the town has reviewed the health and life insurance plans? I mean, that's a big-ticket item, and I'm wondering about the school committee, too, when they've reviewed it. I know that's, well, first of all, does this include, this would include the school department, too, correct? I mean, when's the last time you went out for a review of these plans?
Rich, we belong to the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, okay? Which gives us a cheaper rate through mass purchasing of these plans. It's the trust that goes through on an annual basis, puts out bids for health insurance plans and life insurance plans and dental plans and long-term disability plans. They then take all the, any responses they get back, review them, and determine which plan is best to offer to all the member communities of the trust.
Elaine LaFleur, Chickaby Street. So what you're saying, these are, you offer group life insurance, group term life, and none of it is portable when they retire, where they can assume the plan themselves and pay a premium, as well as short-term and long-term disability? There are portable plans, and why are, I guess what I'm saying is, if I was a town employee, you would continue to pay my life and short-term and long-term disability because I served the town and retired with the town?
Under, under Mass. General Law, if you have health insurance when you retire, you're allowed to continue your health insurance and your life insurance. What this is determining is what is the town's liability for you based upon mortality tables, things of that nature, for what the town would have to pay towards you continuing on health and life insurance past your retirement date. This is what this is for.
Why aren't we offering an insurance that's portable? That you can assume after you've retired, if you want to keep this life insurance policy, you pay the monthly or quarterly premium?
That would have to be come through the trust, because we belong to the trust, and all our plans are offered through the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, and we have to follow what the trust dictates for rules and regulations.
This is considered part of the benefit package when you hire someone?
Yes.
Such as a school, school teacher or town employee?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Abelson, over here.
Abelson Cold Hill. How long does it take to get vested in this? Does someone who's an employee for a year suddenly get life insurance and health insurance forever? Under this, under Granby paying?
They have to retire from Granby. They can't just have worked here.
So if you hire someone close to retirement age, and they retire, and they've only been with us a short time, we're on the hook forever?
Chris, or is that, do I have to say that? Ten years.
It takes 10 years to vest, and then you have to retire, and then you get the benefit. Thank you.
Further questions in the back there?
Francis Quinlan, Taylor Street. Did I understand that there's no actuarial analysis has been done? And is, does that make the $150,000 a guess? I mean, how do we come up with $150,000?
I think we just put the number in. It's not going to be less than $150,000.
Is that your question?
It could be, it could be millions. So this is just a down payment, but we didn't do any special calculations in terms of coming up with $150,000.
Was that your question?
Wait, it's an answer. Not a good one.
Pam Disjardins, Burnett Street. Is this required by Mass. General Law? It looks like it, it's required by Mass. General Law.
We're not being forced to do it yet, but we will eventually have to do it.
So it's strongly recommended by Mass. General Law?
Yes.
That's not usually how the law works, but...
It's going to be forced on us eventually. We're trying to be a little bit proactive.
Okay, so it's kind of moot. We're either going to do it today, or we're going to do it tomorrow?
Elaine, last question?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I work in healthcare, and I have for 25 years, and I'm not feeling too good about this, only because I understand, I, I'm married to a city employee, he receives city benefits, and I will be covered when he retires, but not for the rest of his life. And I think that if we're going to, you know, if, healthcare is millions of dollars. To keep paying these premiums, you know, I really think that maybe we need to think about this, get a little bit more information. Let's form, you know, a team of people to analyze what exactly it is, and then present it to the town's people. I personally am feeling a little uncomfortable with this.
Thank you. One more, over at the bleachers. And while we're waiting, Mark has an answer.
At 65, Medicare kicks in. Yes.
At age 65, so it's not difficult to be 80.
Medicare plays into it. I think we still offer the health insurance. Yeah, optional Medicare extension plan. So that makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what you're saying is, under the Hampshire trust, this is what has been negotiated, so this is mandated if a town employee vests with the town and then retires, and then we pay him and his spouse and his family, whatever the going rate premium is based on the negotiated rate through the Hampshire whatever trust until age 65, and then Medicare kicks in. But if the wife is under 65, she's still going to get the private market insurance, and since all the kids go off at 27, that shouldn't be an issue, I guess. Is that what we're seeing?
Yes, you're correct, Joe.
At age 65, what happens to the life insurance piece, then, Mark?
Chris, what happens to life insurance piece at 65? Come and say that, please.
Under life insurance, what we do is, employees are allowed to purchase $2,000 in basic life insurance while you're an active employee. Once you retire, you're only allowed to have $1,000 in basic life insurance coverage. Basically, to hopefully try and cover, apply towards your burial costs, things of that nature. But they can continue carrying that until they're deceased.
Up on the bleachers, Wayne.
So we're not, this is Wayne Gagnon, North Street. We're not spending any more money because of this, because of this article. This is just a bookkeeping thing, to keep track of the money that we already do. We already have this program set up, correct?
Correct.
So this is just basically setting up a bank account, kind of like the revolving accounts, so that we can keep track of it.
Yeah, so we set up an account. Right now, we're deciding whether we're going to put money into this account to cover things we're already on the hook for. You know, teachers get insurance, the school employees get insurance, and all that kind of stuff. We're on the hook for that. We can't just stop doing it. The, so yeah, we're not, the only thing in terms of money is that we want to deposit money in this account. If we don't want to do it, we don't have to do it.
Up in the back bleachers. Mr. O'Shea, first.
Tim O'Shea, Porter Street. I think what this is, when the employee retires, the employee will, will still pay their same percentage. I don't think the city or the town will be paying 100%.
Correct.
So the, so the employee will still be paying the same percentage.
All right, in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. We have one more question, and then we will, we will move the question. So go ahead, Joe. I mean, Rich, sorry.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. The town has to get their statements audited every year, and the accounting profession requires that the town record a liability for their post-retirement liabilities. And they've been pushing that for several years, and now it's a requirement. So it's more or less an accounting requirement in order to get what's called a clean opinion financial statement that this be done. The other comment I have, I don't, maybe Chris could answer this, and it's very important that, it was thrown around that when people hit 65, the town doesn't pay their, their health insurance. That's not true. That's not true. The town continues to pay their, a good part of their health insurance.
You're correct.
Okay, so I just want everyone to understand that until they die.
All right, so now we are going to vote on the motion. Under Article 13, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. Mr. Bale will now present the motion. Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article 14.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $15,000 for the purpose of purchasing OPEB consultant services.
Second, dare I ask if there's discussion?
So, we have something going on right now for this fiscal year. This is for next fiscal year. Actuarial services, which is actually more than just a liability. You got to figure out more than that.
Talking to the mic. He couldn't hear you. Talking to the mic.
I didn't have that much to say, anyway. This is for actuarial services for next fiscal year. We already had something going on for this fiscal year. But in order to get your liability, you really kind of have to get -- do the actuarial stuff. So, that's what this would pay for.
Any further comments? In order for the motion under Article 15 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate, as offset receipts, fire permit fees in the amount of $1,920 for forest fire warden expense.
Second, any discussion?
I don't know how many of you burn out in your backyard, but you can get a permit. You burn somewhere between January and May. Those permit fees go into this fund for forest fire fighting and the warden, and any expenses that he has. The warden is usually our fire chief. So, this is from those fees. This appropriates it so it can be spent by the chief for this purpose.
Any comments? In order for the motion under Article 15 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Mr. Bale will now present the motion under Article 16.
Madam Moderator, I move the vote -- town vote to appropriate and offset receipts, subscriber fees in the amount of $949 for cable TV Advisory Committee expenses.
Second, any discussion?
I think as Joe Fernie had asked before, we'll be changing the system somewhat. But right now, 50 cents on your cable bill goes toward us, basically, legal fees to negotiate our cable package.
Any further comments? In order for the motion under Article 16 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article 16 passes unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting and reconvene it on June 13th, 2016. Second, all those in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Thank you.